All right. Good morning, everybody. Wait, people are still connecting, just a moment. All right, it looks like everybody is now connected, so good. Oh wait, one more is still connecting. Takes a while for 28 people to get connected. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and get started. Oh wait, Mr. Lawrence says he's still connecting. There he is. Okay, Mr. Lawrence, you were the last to connect this morning. Good morning. I'm sure it's nothing to do with you, it was just the way the electronics worked. All right, so good morning. My name is Alan Lilly, I'm the Presiding Hearing Officer of the State Water Resources Control Board's Administrative Hearings Office. Today is March 23rd, 2022, and it's approximately 10:30 a.m. This is the continuation of the rebuttal phase of the hearing on the prosecution team's draft season to sit order against Blue Triton Brands Inc., which I refer to as Blue Triton. It looks like everybody has the same appearances as yesterday. Are there any new appearances that we did not have yesterday? All right, hearing done, we will proceed. So we finished yesterday with a discussion about the scope of the particularly the technical evidence that Blue Triton had offered, particularly through Mr. Nichols. And there were some concerns about the, I'll just say, the backup data files and potential need for surrebuttal evidence and so forth. So I have reviewed the documents again, and I have the following thoughts, which I'm going to given the nature of a tentative ruling and then ask for comments from the parties. As I mentioned yesterday, I think there's a pretty clear demarcation here between technical evidence that is reporting of measurements taken in the field, data collected in the field, and that then synthesized into figures and tables and so forth. And particularly the detailed photographs, aerial photographs in Attachment 3 to Exhibit BTP-7 and the numbers in those, which Mr. Nichols explained quite a bit in detail yesterday. So that's one side, and then of course, all the descriptive evidence, that's maybe less technical, but all the other descriptive evidence. And then what seems to be the other side of the line, at least in my view, are what I'll call technical studies and modeling. And in that category, I find the paired watershed study, which is described in Section 6.3 of Mr. Nichols' report at Exhibit BTP-7, and the coupled groundwater-surface water model, which is described in Part 7 and the various sections of Mr. Nichols' report, BTP-7. And then in Sections 8.5 and 8.6, there are some findings regarding those studies. And then in Section 9.6, there's some conclusions regarding the paired basin. Those, that study, the paired watershed study, and the coupled groundwater-surface water model work, as my understanding from the evidence is, those were prepared for the Forest Service Special Use Permit renewal process, and they certainly may be very relevant to that. And my other understanding, based on what we heard yesterday afternoon, is that there are significant refinements still ongoing to the coupled groundwater-surface water model. And I understand that the concerns of some of the other parties that Blue Triton has not produced the data input files for particularly the coupled groundwater-surface water model, and there may also be some input files related to the paired watershed study. And then related to that, at least Story of Stuff project and prosecution team have indicated that they may want to provide surrebuttal, which would be other technical experts testifying about their modeling work and whether or not it agrees or disagrees, which is different conclusions than the modeling work described in Mr. Nichols' report. So that, as I see it, is sort of the lay of the land, so to speak, on these technical issues. Now, first of all, Mr. Nichols did not include any significant discussions of either the paired watershed study or the coupled surface water coupled groundwater-surface water model in his written proposed testimony, which is Exhibit BTP-6. I think the only somebody, make a note, and when I call on you, correct me if I'm wrong, and Mr. Nichols, please, you also correct me if I'm wrong, but I do see a reference to the paired basin study report in paragraph 9 of Mr. Nichols' testimony. And I think that's it. Unless I've missed anything, maybe I'm just while we're going forward, I just short answer, Mr. Nichols, if, and I know your written proposed testimony is 45 pages long, but do you recall any other discussions in "it" of either the paired watershed study or the coupled groundwater-surface water model?
I believe there's only that one reference to the paired basin study. And I think that there are maybe three sentences that refer to the model, to the or to the coupled groundwater-surface water model.
And can you tell me where those are, please?
I'll have to bring up the document and do a quick search.
I have the document up and I can assist.
Just tell me, if you know, Ms. Grady, what page or paragraph number?
I believe it's paragraph 84 on page 25 of the document.
It's amazing what we can find with technology. 84, you said?
Yes, word search is a beautiful tool.
You know how to use it. Okay. Oh, 84, I'm sorry.
Page, I'm sorry, page 25, paragraph 84. And this is BTP-6.
Okay, I do see in hydrologic simulations using a coupled surface water, groundwater-surface water model, and that's about it. Okay, I
There's another reference, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, you're doing a word search better than I am. Where else, Ms. Grady?
Page 35.
Just a minute, just a minute here, I'm giving you an idea of how low-tech I am. I'm putting yellow stickers on these pages just so I can go back to them quickly. All right, page 35, which paragraph?
Paragraph 114.
Oh, the model results described below. Okay, so there may be, I don't know whether "below" means the next sentence or whether there's anything more.
I believe it continues in that next sentence.
All right, well, we can certainly go back if we need to. But that was about all I found. So, I think, and clearly this, the model work, I mean, clearly, the model work is very important for the Forest Service Special Use Permit renewal process, and I'm not meaning to suggest otherwise, but they clearly have very different legal issues and policy issues than what we are addressing in this proceeding. So, I think, my inclination is we can and also, I will say, I don't think these model results are going to be relevant or even, or more than just very marginally relevant, if at all, to the analysis I'm going to prepare in the proposed order that I ultimately will prepare, and of course, after circulating a draft to all of you and receiving your comments, we'll send to the board. I don't think these models, the paired watershed study or the coupled groundwater-surface water model results are going to be very relevant, if at all, to the issues in this hearing, particularly the issues of the board's jurisdiction under Water Code 1200, and certainly not at all to the question of the scope of a pre-14 right, if any. So, I think there's a pretty clear line here, and we can really limit a lot or not receive a lot of evidence that would be technically very complex and not really on point and would take a lot of time. So, my proposal is to not to basically, and we can talk about admissibility for other issues regarding other issues of BTP-6 and 7, but I'm inclined to not allow those couple of sentences in BTP-6 that reference the paired watershed study and the coupled groundwater-surface water model, and then not to allow into evidence Section 6.3, Part 7, Section 8.5, Section 8.6, and Section 9.6 of Exhibit BTP-7, and then, of course, not to allow cross-examination of Mr. Nichols on any of those subjects, and not to allow any surrebuttal evidence on those topics. I do want to say that I think there is, and there also was a problem as Mr. Petrazelli pointed out yesterday, as to whether or not the Blue Triton had submitted the information regarding the backup information for that modeling work that's required in the in my March, November 17, 2021 hearing notice on page 15. Now, having said that, I think the issues regarding the, I'm going to call them the Attachment 3 photographs with tables and figures, and there were some other figures with rainfall information and information regarding data collected during the shut-in tests. Those are figures that have been presented in the report, and Mr. Nichols described his process for doing that very well. So, I don't think that the requirements in the hearing notice apply to those. Now, I will certainly consider if Ms. Dodi or anybody else has some argument or reason for explaining why they need the backup data files for those figures. But I, you know, I have no reason to doubt that Haley and Aldridge and Mr. Nichols are highly professionals and have been very careful about using that data. There may be mistakes, I mean, we all I'm not attributed to that, but we all can make mistakes with data entry and so forth, but I think as a practical matter, if they've represented rainfall data, data collected in the field, that they've done so accurately and put that in the figure. So I I'm questioning whether there really is a need for them to produce all the data files for that information, which could be quite burdensome just to assemble it all and get it together. And I just really wonder whether any party really is going to want to go through the thousands of data points to see whether some plot in one of those figures or some number in one of the tables is inaccurate, if that's really all, that would be the only purpose for providing those data files. So, anyway, I would like, so that's my thought on that, is that we can allow those, that information into evidence and sufficient foundation has been provided, and unless I see, unless Story of Stuff convinced me otherwise, I don't see that there's a need to produce the backup data files for that. So anyway, that's my tentative ruling. Let's start first with the modeling results, the descriptions and summaries of the modeling results that I just rattled off for the sections of Exhibit BTP-7 and those couple of sentences in Exhibit BTP-6. We'll come back to the data, the field, what I'm going to call the field data next, but with that, for, I don't know which attorney for Blue Triton would like to address this, but is, does Blue Triton have any objection if we do not allow those sections of those two exhibits into evidence, and then as a result, do not allow any cross-examination of those subjects and do not allow any surrebuttal of those subjects?
Thank you for your thoughtful approach for this.
Excuse me, Ms. Grady. Mr. Petrazelli, I see your hand, I'm going to let Ms. Grady respond first, because I did ask her, and then I will come to you. Go ahead, Ms. Grady.
We appreciate your thought that you clearly put into this last night in trying to figure out a path forward. Our office did reach out to the prosecution team to discuss this issue this morning, and weren't able to reach a collective result, and although we think that this information is critical because it validates or supports Mr. Nichols' testimony, your approach seems to really make sense, and I think it would work. The only questions I would have, and this goes to both of the categories of information you've been talking about, would to, and I have three questions. One, would we be striking any oral testimony on the topic? Which we could probably do with the use of the transcripts that have been prepared. Two, just to confirm that this would be excluded any arguments on this issue the same. I mean, if you're excluding this topic, just to confirm, that would also be excluded from closing brief arguments, et cetera. And shoot, now I'm forgetting my third. You've already confirmed for rebuttal and surrebuttal. I think that might be it, but request that if I remember my third point, that I may raise my hand and come back to it.
Okay, come back, raise your hand if you want to come back, Mr. Petrazelli. And first of all, I, oh, did you just think of it?
I did.
Go ahead, number three.
And number three, and I apologize, I should have written down my notes when they came to me earlier and failed to do so. The third was kind of, where does this resolve, does this resolve in its entirety the motion to quash, and would that be granted at this point?
This is Blue Triton's motion to cross
The story of, quash, the story of Stuff's subpoena.
Okay.
Which seeks this information.
The answer is, we need to talk about that too, but I do have that as something we need to talk about, so thank you. All right, Mr. Petrazelli, and first of all, I don't know whether I give you gold stars or what, but I do appreciate the fact that, at least, apparently, Mr. Petrazelli talked to some members of Blue Triton's attorneys, and I do really appreciate your professionalism in reaching out to one another to discuss this. I hadn't even encouraged you to do that, but obviously, that was the right thing to do. So, Mr. Petrazelli, please go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to ask, Mr. Lilly, if you could repeat the sections that you thought were and I hope I don't mischaracterize anything you say, said, not relevant, or that you didn't, or that you wanted to exclude. I had a hard time getting them following.
All right, so, so my proposed ruling, for the reasons I stated, I'm not going to restate the reasons, but would not be to allow into evidence the following sections of Exhibit BTP-7. And those are Section 6.3, all of Part 7, Section 8.5, Section 8.6, and Section 9.6. And while we're at it, nobody has talked about this, and I don't think there's any issue with this, but Attachment 4 to Exhibit BTP-7 is a result of a hydraulic study regarding the areas of the pipeline, the Blue Triton pipeline, that may be adversely affected by precipitation event. And since that's, it's also a study, and it does not seem to be on point for our hearing, so I would also exclude Attachment 4 to Exhibit BTP-7. So, does that answer your question, Mr. Petrazelli? But go off there.
If it does.
All right, thank you. All right, so thank you, Ms. Grady. While we're on the modeling, does anybody else have any comments on that? I mean, I think this really will not limit the receipt of relevant evidence, but will significantly reduce or the receipt of irrelevant or potentially cumulative evidence. So, Ms. Dodi, go ahead. And I'll come back to you, Mr. Petrazelli. Go ahead, Ms. Dodi.
It's unclear to me, and I'm not sure I can do it here on the fly, that those few paragraphs or sentences indicated by counsel for BTP just now is the totality of the evidence that Mr., a testimony of Mr. Nichols, in which he's drawing his conclusions as a result of the modeling.
Okay.
That's my primary concern in doing this quickly and
Right. All right, so let me just tell you for BTP-6 what I found that references the studies. And it would be I'm going to go by paragraph numbers, because I think that's the easiest way to refer to this. It would be paragraph 9, second sentence. I mean, this is not, this just refers to the paired basin study report, but since we're excluding the report, we would exclude that sentence. And then in paragraph 84, we would exclude the, it's half of a sentence, the very last line on the page, which says "hydrollogic simulations conducted using a coupled groundwater-surface water model." And then
Mr. Lilly, I think that sentence could add, just to make it not seem like Mark, Mr. Nichols, in sentences, mid-sentence, I think you could delete from the comma, and we could replace that with a period and get rid of
You know, this
hydrologic, sorry.
All right, go ahead.
Just trying to make that a smoother ending to the sentence. I think if we just deleted from the comma and changed that to a period on line 25.
Okay, so it would be all the text I said plus "and."
Correct.
So yeah, it would just, the sentence would then read, "The analysis included physical hydraulic testing of boreholes that are proximal to either springs or flowing creek segments," and we would strike the rest of that sentence, or just not not admit it into evidence. Okay, and then also, this one's a little easier, all of paragraph 114. So, and Ms. Dodi, if you find something else that refers to the paired watershed study or the coupled surface groundwater-surface water model, you know, certainly, the intent would be, in Exhibit BTP-6, the intent would be to exclude that as well. But that's, that's my tentative ruling on that. Does anybody else have any comments? All right. So let's, we'll go forward, that will be, that is my ruling, we will do that to limit the, what's admitted into evidence and to limit associated cross-examination and surrebuttal. The next matter, oh, excuse me, Amanda Frye, your hand is up, go ahead.
Right.
I see your hand.
I see, hi.
There you are.
You know, I just, I just want to make sure that on paragraph four, when he mentions available geological reports, that there's not sections out of these models, like the soil sample or something like that, or land classifications that are going to be eliminated. I mean, there's available geological reports is very broad to me, and there's some overlap in this Section 7. So I just want to, you know, I don't want to exclude something by excluding 7.
No, I don't, I don't, I read available geologic data reports, not to refer to the modeling work, that's, that's technical works, the technical works that other people have prepared in the past, or that Mr. Nichols and his team have assembled regarding geology. I think that's distinct from modeling.
Except that, in some of his modeling, I mean, they use large data sets that are, you know, like the soil land classification elevation model, so within the, you know, the surface water flow model, the SWAP model, there are these subsets.
Right.
And
I
You understand what I'm saying, yeah.
I understand what you're saying, but to put a handle on this hearing, we are not going to accept that information into evidence. Because once, once we start getting into parts of the model reports that are in or out, we'd be doing this forever. So, and frankly, I think Mr. Nichols has covered the geology in other material besides the model report, so that would not come in. All right, I'm going to go forward now. As I mentioned, the other issue is the reporting that Mr. Nichols has done of the data that he and his colleagues collected during their field work and their shut-in and turnout tests on site. And Ms. Dodi, your, your second motion, or Story of Stuff's project, second motion eliminate cites or highlights a lot of Mr. Nichols' testimony regarding that data collection, and then it also highlights information that you assert. Yes, I'll just go through here. You highlighted in green testimony because it contains fact, statements of fact for which the witness has failed to lay a proper foundation. Statements in purple that you state mischaracterizes prior evidence or testimony. Text in blue that you say states legal conclusions, and text in orange that where Blue Triton has failed to produce sufficient evidence. So let me go through these by category. I have read over all of the matters that are highlighted in green, and I I disagree with you about that. I think he has, I mean, it's a very detailed report, and Exhibit BTP-7 has even more detail. I think, and certainly on cross-examination, Mr. Nichols demonstrated a clear knowledge with the topics that are discussed in these areas highlighted in green. So I, I mean, this is the way technical experts present their information. I think Mr. Nichols has done that professionally with adequate foundation. So the, I deny your motion to eliminate regarding the matters highlighted in green. As far as the matters highlighted in purple, where you state he has mischaracterized prior testimony, I deny that part of the motion eliminate on the grounds that that goes clearly to the weight of his evidence and not to the admissibility. If you think that he has said something that's incorrect or contradicts what another witness has said, you may certainly point that out in your closing brief, and that's certainly appropriate argument, but that's not a question of admissibility. Regarding the text that's highlighted in blue, which states legal conclusions, I deny that motion eliminate. Mr. Nichols testified pretty clearly in response to, I think it was your cross-examination questions, that he's not a lawyer, but that he worked as part of a team, which does have lawyers, which is the way most technical teams in something like this work, and that he received information from the lawyers that he put into that part of the test. You can ask him about his understanding of the about his understanding of those legal rules, although I suspect he's going to tell you, I think he did say yesterday that that's what the lawyers told him and he didn't do any independent legal research. But I, I don't think there's a need to exclude that part of his testimony. I think it's there. I mean, certainly we're not going to give it the weight as if he was speaking on behalf of the California Supreme Court on those issues, but to the extent he's characterizing a legal argument, I think it's fine for that to come in. And so again, it will go to the weight of the testimony, but not to the admissibility. And then regarding the text highlighted in orange, except for the modeling discussions we just talked about, I think everything else that you highlighted in orange comes into the category of Mr. Nichols referring to prior technical reports that the others had prepared, which he does cite, or referring to data collected in the field by him and, and his, his colleagues and his team members, as I say, either when they were doing their stream measurements or the pezometer recordings and their, their shut-in and turnout tests. So I, I think that's all appropriately described. So I'm going to deny the motion eliminate as to that. Let me just go forward here. I did receive initial objections from Ms. Palenki for Center for Biological Diversity and Mr. Silver for the Sierra Club. The general objection about the lack of information for the modeling report, I think we've covered with our limitation on the admis- admissibility of the modeling. There are, there are a few other sections here where I'm just looking at them. Number one, description of the vegetation conditions provides no basis for the statements and how the different vegetation types were identified. I, I think that goes to the weight, not the admissibility. I mean, Mr. Nichols has testified, he's been on site more than a hundred times. So, and he certainly is, as a geologist, I, I if he does have qualifications to talk about vegetation conditions. I understand vegetation is not geology, but it's pretty closely related to what geologists do, and I'm sure in his fieldwork, he has experience in identifying vegetation conditions. Again, regarding the geology section, different rock types, that's clearly within Mr. Nichols' expertise. So I, that, that, that is admissible. Section, you have a section regarding groundwater. Again, I, I think he's, he's talked about that in, in detail and shown that he does have information able to talk about that. The stable, the next section, section six, excuse me, three-point-two. Let me just double check. Section three-point-two. Okay, yes. But that's, the groundwater, your, your comment three-point-one regarding groundwater provides no references. Again, he, he's demonstrating, he knows this field well. So I think he has established a foundation for that testimony. The stable isotope analysis is a little more complicated for me on how to rule on. I, certainly what he has testified to is admissible. The only question here is whether there's an adequate foundation. He did testify yesterday that the figure six and seven present the data that he assembled for the stable isotope analysis. So I, I think it's admissible, so I'm going to deny your, your objection to admissibility. If you really think that you need more information regarding what they did, and again, this is, this is a fairly collateral point to the issues in our hearing, but if you think that there's, if you can demonstrate that you need the, the data set for that and that you have somebody who wants to do an independent analysis of that data, I will consider that argument. But I'm going, I'm going to allow it, I'm going to deny your motion eliminate as to that testimony. Or, and, but then allow you to do that follow-up if necessary. And I, I'll say the same thing for your next objection, Ms. Palenki, to section three-point-three. The report does not provide a long-term precipitation record. And Mr. Nichols did testify as to the various rainfall stations and, and said that the one, I forget the name of, the one basically closest to these springs was the one that was used for most of those figures. So again, I, I'm not sure this is going to be critical. And I mean, I, I have every belief that they plotted the rainfall data accurately. But if you can, if you can demonstrate some reason why you need more information from Mr. Nichols about the precipitation data, I'll consider that, but I'm going to deny the motion eliminate as to his evidence. And then for the shut-in test methodologies as to whether there was time to observe a new equilibrium, I think he does testify about that. That, that is something you can ask him about on cross-examination if you want to. But his testimony is admissible on that subject. And then finally, the groundwater model, as I've previously ruled, we're not going to allow that into evidence. So, and then your general objections to B T B six, I've, I'm going to deny that motion for the same reason I, I referenced for Story of Stuff projects, motion eliminate regarding B T B six. I, I think it's pretty clear that Mr. Nichols' testimony is pretty clear what the conclusions are based on. I mean, if, if there are specific conclusions that you don't think are clear of what the basis of them are, you can ask him those questions on cross-examination. But that's, I don't think there's sufficient reason to deny admitting that into evidence. So with that, I'm, I'm going to come to Story of Stuff project subpoena in a minute, but I'm going to pause here. I think those are the motions in eliminate we have and the issues that came up yesterday regarding technical models and related studies. So does anybody have any questions about that? And Ms. Palenki, I see your hand is up, so please go ahead.
Um, I understand your ruling. I'm, I'm actually a little bit confused on the stable isotopes. What we said is that they're, they don't provide a lot of the background information that would normally be in a report, according to experts that we are talking to. And so we can't, we don't have enough information. You're saying it can come into evidence and we, you won't require the rest of the information to be provided. I'm just trying to understand that, particularly with the stable isotope issue. You're saying it's collateral. I'm not, that's sort of a conclusion. But there are no data sheets provided. There is nothing about the sampling methodology. And there's no information about the laboratory that did the analysis, et cetera. These are the kinds of basic information that is usually provided when you provide these kind of conclusory analyses. And you're saying we, we can't, you're not going to require them to provide any of that. I just want to clarify, that's what you're saying.
Well, I, yes, and that, that's not what I said, so I appreciate your question. What I said was I'm going to rule that the testimony is admissible. I, what I also said or meant to say is if you can, and then you can certainly cross-examine, you haven't done your cross-examination yet, but you certainly can cross-examine Mr. Nichols about the sampling methodology. I think that's something he can probably testify to. He can probably also provide you the name of the laboratory. And whether or not the, the, basically the protocols for quality assurance. And beyond that, if, if you, if you can demonstrate why you think you need the data sheets, I will ask Blue Trident if they have any objections to providing the data sheets. Again, I, this is, I mean, I don't know how I'm going to use this, if at all, this being this analysis of stable isotopes in the proposed order I prepare. I think this is pretty peripheral to what our main issues are. So I don't want to just go down every rabbit hole here. But you can ask him those questions on cross-examination. And if you can demonstrate that you need the data sets that, the backup for those figures, which clearly are not in the record, then I will give Blue Trident an opportunity to respond and I'll rule on whether or not they need to produce that. I mean, there, there's a lot of judgment calls involved here because for a technical matter like this, if Blue Trident produced all the data files they have, they might crash the State Water Board's computer system and there, it would be a lot of information that we don't need. But balanced against that, if you can demonstrate that there are particular data sets that you think you need to effectively analyze this or respond to this, then I will consider that. But that, I'm trying to work a balance there and that's, that's my plan for that. So I hope that answers your question. Why don't you, you can think about that when you're developing your cross-examination questions and then we can follow up as necessary on that. All right, Ms. Ms. Dodi, your hand is.
Can I just ask one more? I'm just not sure what, I guess I just don't know what it is that you would need me to demonstrate. But I will go through the cross-examination and we will see. But.
Okay.
If the expert that we're talking to says I would need these things in order to evaluate this, what, I don't know what there is that I could do here.
Okay, well, and let me explain that. The, I'll get the figure here. I think it was figured. Figure seven. This is figure seven of exhibit B T B seven. There are about twenty-five data points on this figure. I assume, I think Mr. Nichols testified that each of those data points was plotted. And so I assume that the data point was plotted at the point that is appropriate for the X-axis and the Y-axis in that graph. Now, you, I mean, certainly if you had the data set, you or your technical person could go check and make sure each of those points is accurately plotted. I, I have no reason to doubt there are, but as I said before, mistakes do happen and it's possible, one or more of them is not plotted correctly. And if you think that is important, then I will ask Blue Trident if they have a problem with producing the data set that was used to generate this graph. And we can go, you can spend the time with your technical people to go down that path. As I say, I don't know that it's really going to matter at the end of the day if some of these data points were incorrectly plotted and they should be a little bit different. I mean, maybe if they were totally fabricated, that would be a problem, but I have no reason to, to think that that is what has happened. So anyway, that's where I'm coming from. I see the graph. I assume the data points are accurately plotted. But if you want to pursue that, we can talk about that when we get to your cross-ex and, and follow-up request. So is that reasonably clear?
It's reasonably clear. It requires some amount of forecasting or assumptions on our part to assume that they did something wrong before we can even look at it. And that just seems a little confusing, but that's fine. We can move on.
Okay, and, and it's, it's not so much that, I mean, I understand it's sensitive and you don't want to accuse them of doing something wrong if you don't know that that's true. I understand you're respecting them for that, but I, I really am asking a different question. Is this important enough that you want to go down the path of checking these data points? So that's.
I think we wouldn't have raised it if we didn't think it was important.
Okay, well, I, I know, okay.
I, I guess we raised it because we think it's important.
Okay, and my question is, is it important enough to go down that process? So think about that and when we get to your cross-examination, we'll come back to that. Okay, Mr. Petrazzelli, your hand is up. Go ahead.
Um, I have, I have two questions. One, I'm being told that there are figures, I think they're in the section titled Figures that are representations of some of the sections that you have chosen to strike.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, you broke up. Chosen what?
I'm being, I'm being told that there, that in the section titled Figures, there are figures that represent results of modeling and other analyses in the sections that you've stricken. You know, it's a, it's a lengthy report, so it's, you know, it may take some time to parse through everything.
Okay, so let me, let me address that. That's a good point.
And I, I guess what I, what I'll ask is that, you know, if in the future course of this proceeding, we see something that, you know, looks like it relied on something that you chose to strike, can, can we say this wasn't specifically stricken, but it looks like it relied on an analysis in, you know, section six-point-three, for instance?
Yes, and the answer is yes, you may do that. And also it appears that it figures, and again, I'll ask Blue Trident to respond. It looks like figures twenty-nine through forty-five in exhibit B T B seven all concern the modeling. So if we're, and again, I'm not saying it's, it's striking, we're just not admitting into evidence. Maybe that's the same as striking, but we're not admitting into evidence the sections I referred to before of exhibit B T B seven. So we should also not admit into evidence figures twenty-nine through forty-five. And I don't know, Ms. Grady, if you want to take a moment to check, I'm not trying to, I'm trying to get through this, but does that appear to be consistent with the prior ruling?
I'm trying to check right now and thank you. And just for clarity of our record, we're talking about B T B seven.
Yeah, and, and the way I did this really fast is I went to page little Roman numeral five of the table of contents. A lot faster than going through all the figures. And I just looked at page Roman numeral little five and little six, which lists those figures, and they appear to all be related to the model. So it's, I'll just pause for a minute here.
And I, and I had a second question too, that.
All right.
And if we're not there yet, that's fine.
Well, I'm, tell you what, Ms. Grady, if you can't answer that right now, I'm, I'm going to assume those are the ones and exclude them. But if you come, want to come back later and tell me I missed something, that's fine.
Yeah, if we could reserve our comment on that until maybe after the next break, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, that's fine. I, 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 we're covering a lot of paper.
Yeah.
All right, so Mr. Petrazzelli, comment number two or question?
Um, will we get, say, a red line of, you know, that shows what's been stricken?
No, but I'm not going to ask them to.
Okay.
I, I, well, I will issue a ruling though that'll list the sections. I, I think that'll be simple enough. I, I don't want them to have to redline it to B T B seven. That, again, there's so many megabytes in that, it might cause something to crash and, and we can just do that with a ruling. So we'll do it that way. All right, Ms. Dodi, your hand is back up. Go ahead. Go off here.
Thank you. So I have a remaining concern about some of the other data and a potential proposed solution that I think may track what Mr. Petrazzelli was just asking about. And, and I'll provide an example as a lead-in to this. So what our expert has told us with regard to the shut-in test, for example, which are discussed at B T B seven, page twenty-five, is that the methodologies used to perform that have not been included in the report in any obvious way. I haven't made it to asking that of Mr. Nichols yet. But, so we don't know the timeframe that the test was delivered. We don't have an assessment as to whether sufficient time was allowed to observe new equilibrium conditions between the boreholes and the springs to develop. was allowed to observe new equilibrium conditions between the bore holes and the springs to develop. And then we don't know, as described in section 6.2.4, there's no published method for calculating the hydraulic connectivity, conductivity um, or reference as to how the hydraulic gradient was established. That's not provided. There's no reference provided about error bounds of estimation that can be evaluated against any published protocol. And the text doesn't describe whether the primary permeability would be vertical or horizontal, which could also have impacts on their reported results. So that's the shut in. And I admit, I am reading from direction from the expert. I'm struggling a little here to do this very quickly in terms of understanding which data is just a report of like, you know, we, we collected water in a rain gauge. But it really does matter if you collected water in a rain gauge, you know, when you put the rain gauge out and what type of rain gauge it was, how often you checked it. You know, so, so it just giving us the data, but not giving us the methods and not giving us the, how the data was treated, whether any was cold as, you know, that this looks like an outlier that's based on something, you know, like somebody knocked over the testing equipment, not something real in the data. We don't, we don't know those things because we're just given a final report without methodologies for a lot of this data is my understanding. So that's my example and concern. And then what I think Mr. Petrazelli was proposing is to reserve um, a decision on the admissibility of some of this evidence. And because I think it's a really technical question as to whether some of this meets the standard that you set in your November 5th, um, order. I'd ask that the admission of this evidence be, the question of the admission be reserved until after the sur rebuttal experts can say what they think from a technical perspective about this, because I think as lawyers talking about it, we're likely to go too far sometimes and not far enough other times.
All right. So here is my response to that. Um, some of those questions, issues, as we lawyers say, um, you can address through cross examination. If you don't think the report describes in enough detail, and I, I don't want this to go on forever. But if there are questions where you want to ask him, why did you choose? I'll just throw out 36 days for a set in test instead of having it go for 57. Um, or whatever like that. You can ask him those questions on cross examination. Or, you know, how are you confident that you had sufficient shut in time to achieve equilibrium? Um, and as far as, so things like that about their methodology methods, you can ask him to explain what he did in more detail if you think more information is necessary. I, based on how I've seen and heard Mr. Nichols testify, I'm pretty confident he will be able to give you answers to those questions. Um, and then beyond that, if your expert thinks that some of these things are not right, like that there isn't a published, I wrote down published method for hydraulic conductivity, error bands, and whether the primary permeability is horizontal or vertical, your expert can testify about that. That's what sur rebuttal will be. Uh, but those issues go to the weight of the evidence. I mean, that's why we have sur rebuttal. If, if your expert on sur rebuttal says some things that contradict Mr. Nichols, that may affect the weight uh, that I and ultimately the state board gives to Mr. Nichols testimony on that. But that does not affect the admissibility of the testimony. So I hope that's clear. I intend to rule on the admissibility of these exhibits, particularly BTB six and seven. After we've completed all our questioning of Mr. Nichols, I don't think I need to wait. I mean, whether or not somebody else rebuts that is not, but something in Mr. Nichols testimony is not going to affect the admissibility of his testimony. It might affect the weight that we should give his testimony. So that is my plan on that. Does that, does that answer your question on that?
It does. And I, I, I truly don't want to belabor this more than necessary, but I think what our experts are telling us is there's a general standard when you prepare a scientific paper, you have a materials and methods section, you have a, you know, you have a results section, and then you have sort of an opinion or the, the conclusion section at the end. And what they're saying is kind of missing here is the materials and methods. So I can go through and ask him each of those things and, you know, get his oral statement, which is for anybody generally not sort of as methodical as what you would write down um, in a scientific paper. I understand he wasn't writing a scientific paper here, although BTB seven is presented as a scientific paper. So I, I, I'm just, I'm looking at the November, what, what we provided our experts was the November 5th standard and said, do you have this? Uh, you know, are you able to, to look at this and and make a comment on his results based on what he gave us? And they're saying no. And so what I'm hearing from you is that we need to try to extract that from him on direct. But it seemed that the burden from your order was placed on the person testifying to provide that information. And it hasn't been provided from the perspective of our, of our experts on some issues. And so if, if I need to bring that out across, I just want to understand that that's the direction.
All right. Well, I want to clarify. I said this earlier, and I think you misspoke about this. First of all, I think you're referring to my November 17 hearing notice. Um, as I said earlier, that standard unreproducibly applies to models. I do not consider the shut in test to be models. I consider the shut in test to be data collection and a report on data. So, uh, that, so let's just be clear on that. I will allow you some opportunity to question Mr. Nichols on that, but it, I, it's got to be along the lines of, I need, I, I, I don't, I don't, can't find this information. This information is relevant. Please tell me what it is. And methodologies and so forth may be in that category. Um, but beyond that, I think just about everything else you said, you're going to need to address on sur rebuttal through your own expert and not on Mr. Nickel, not on trying to cross examine Mr. Nichols. I mean, I, we, we spent a lot of time yesterday afternoon. It became fairly laborious in pointing out, or you're trying to point out what data was in his report and what was not. And I think Mr. Nichols did as well as he could to explain that. So if you have specific questions about either things that are missing, that you, you don't understand about how he did his work or missing data, you can ask him that on cross X, but that's the limit of cross X. Beyond that, I think it's going to be sur rebuttal. And I don't think this is an admissibility question. So I, I hope that ruling is clear. Um, I'm going to allow you some additional time, but not forever to ask questions on this. I, I, I mean, we could go around this forever. I think you can have pretty focused questions to get the information you need from Mr. Nichols. And then beyond that, it's sur rebuttal. So I hope that's clear. Ms., Ms. Frye, your hand is up. Please go ahead.
I, as a scientist, I sort of have a problem. I mean, somebody can just go and say anything then. Is that what she's going to get out? Oh, I mean, usually there's standard procedures. And, or you have to provide your methodology. I, so I don't know. Then the data is no good, but.
All right. Well, I have not seen any, I mean, maybe it's just because I don't know. But I, I will just say, I think Mr. Nichols description of his shut in and turnout test is quite detailed and provides a lot of information. So if there are specific gaps, information gaps in what is reported, um, Ms. Doney, you can ask him about that. He can explain. I think he's done a very good job of trying to explain up till now. And then, as I say, beyond that, you can comment on that. That, that's our proceeding here. Again, there's a different threshold for admissibility versus for what weight to give the evidence. And I, I think it's important first of all, keep in mind those two distinctions here. So is there anything else on that? Oh, so if there's, is there anything else on the motions in Lemonade or on, on my ruling on limiting evidence that we need to cover? I, I do want to briefly talk about Story of Stuff Project subpoena. Um, but I, I want to pause here and make sure we've covered the topic so far that we've covered. All right. I think we have. Um. So, um, Ms. Doney, I did look over Story of Stuff Projects subpoena due since TICM of this morning. Um, I think I, I'm going to ask you, not right now, but sometime by the end of the hearing, this round of hearing, probably the next day or two, to go through that and refine it and narrow it considerably. A lot of doc, and I'm not criticizing you because you didn't know about the ruling I was going to make today until I made it. Uh, but a lot of the information you request concerns modeling, which were not what the, the coupled groundwater, surface water modeling and the paired wire shed study. So obviously, I'm not going to allow you to pursue subpoenaing information about those two technical works. Um, and then I, I have made some other comments about what's admissible and what's not, or what's relevant or what's not relevant. So I'm going to ask you to um, go through your cross examination, listen to Ms. Belenki's cross examination and my questions and any redirect. And then probably I will ask you to narrow your prior subpoena into what you still think is necessary and why you think it's necessary. I, I, the, the other thing is we are pretty late in the process here. Uh, I, you know, the I, I understand there are challenges to, you know, knowing what to ask for until you've received documents and so forth, but uh, we're, we're, we're really not in a discovery phase right now. So it's not just sort of, I'm not going to allow you to just sort of demand information that you think might be relevant. It's got to be something that you think is necessary to respond to something that uh, Blue Trident has put into evidence in the hearing. So anyway, I'm just advising you, you don't have to respond to that now, but I would like to get some clarity on that subpoena and the, um, the motion to quash from, uh, Blue Trident, so we can make progress on that. So I think that covers everything we were going to cover that we need to cover on procedural matters. Um, I'm going to, I'll take an early break today. Uh, because I think it's, I want to give the attorneys time to go through their cross ex, and Ms. Frye, Mr. Lowe, time to go through your cross examination questions and in light of my rulings. Hopefully you can narrow them, focus them, revise them. Um, so we can make this more efficient in the afternoon. Um, so does anybody have any other questions before we, we take a break for, to do that? Um, I have on my list, Ms. Dody, Ms. Belenki, Mr. Low and Ms. Frye. And I will ask some questions. Is there anybody else who, I don't think there's, is there anybody else who's going to want to ask cross examination questions of Mr. Nichols? All right. I, I'm not going to ask for time estimates now. But I'm going to give you a little, I'm going to have a little longer than normal break and please use it to formulate your questions. I, I, I really am urging you, asking you, maybe even requiring you to ask good, simple, short questions of Mr. Nichols. I think it can be done. And if it's along the lines of, is there any data in your report that supports, is there any backup data that supports this statement? Just ask that and let him answer and we can move on. I, I just don't want this to drag on. I would like to finish this cross examination this afternoon. So with that, is there any, I'm going to break till one o'clock. Is there anybody who wants to ask or say anything else before we take our break? All right. And just a reminder, for our noon break, you do need to log off and then log back on. So we'll all be back at one o'clock and we'll proceed with cross examination by Ms. Dody and then Ms. Belenki and then, um, Ms. Frye and then Mr. Low. So with that, I will see you all at 1:00 PM. Thank you.